Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the CPC regular meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at five oh four P M. It is Monday, March thirteenth. We are live at Old Town Hall, and we're also available via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later date. If we could all please rise for the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Just want to make sure Holly, can you hear us on Zoom?
Hello, yes, I can hear you, but I could not see you, but now I can.
Thank you very much. So just going to start off quick with committee member introductions. I am Kevin Smith, Jr. I'm the chairman and the Pakistan Rec Representative.
Bill Pruitt.
I'm representative of the Dynasty Store Commission and Vice Chair.
Dan Higgins, representative of the Planning Board.
Jonathan Gale, I'm the ADA Coordinator and Chair of the ADA Commission.
William Fontaine, Dayton House, under authority.
We're going to start off quick with our financial reports. I don't think Mr. Eckerson is not with us this evening unless he's jumped on Zoom. So let me pull up a couple of things just to kind of get everybody up to speed. I had the opportunity to attend last week's Board of Selectment meeting, and I kind of simplified our financial reports to make it a little bit easier for everybody to understand. All right, so what I did is I broke everything down because sometimes the actual accounting ledger is a little bit difficult to understand. And I also did visit with the town accountant and the town treasurer just prior to that Board of Selectment meeting to make sure that all our figures were correct. Because there was some funding kind of hanging in limbo until it was reconciled by the town treasurer. So our actual, our actual unreserved, undesignated fund has a balance of four hundred and twenty two thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty one cents. Our open space slash rec fund has fifty three thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty seven cents. Historic Resources has thirty five thousand, eight hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty seven cents. And Community Housing has thirty eight thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty seven cents. What you also see is I actually went back through our, our CP three database through the Department of Revenue. And I went back and I looked, and this is kind of in chronological order from newest to late oldest. All the projects that we have funded in the past since we adopted CPA ten years ago. So I did an itemized list of the projects we funded, what the funding source was, and the amounts and whether or not they're in progress or completed. So I ran, ran down through all those. Just to kind of show what we've done in the past. Since we've adopted CPA, we've funded eight hundred and seventy three thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars worth of projects. Five hundred and three thousand has gone to open space or recreation projects. Two hundred and thirty four thousand, sixty and sixty seven has gone to historical resource projects. And a hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars has gone to community housing projects. I also created just this very simple pie chart to kind of show you classically where our funding has gone. So over that span of time, almost fifty eight percent of our funding has gone to open space or recreation projects. That's largely recreation too. There's only been two open space acquisition. Projects that we have funded, one being an agricultural restriction on Elm Street and another one being a conservation restriction on Brook Street to complete the Herring, Herring Run project. The six point eight percent of our funds have gone to historical projects and fifteen point six percent of our funds have gone to housing projects. So that just kind of gives us a brief overview of what we've done in the past and where the funds have gone. Anybody have any questions as far as financial reports go? So under old business, our first item is CPC funded project updates. As you can see, just from the last graphic that kind of falls into this, so we have a rundown of where, where everything stands as it is. There's no further updates for any CPC funded projects at this time. Next, we have CPC at large member applications, Alicia Wilson, Brett, Brand Sidroni and David Rosa. We decided last time to wait until this meeting to decide who we were going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen as members to join us. We want to talk about that at this time. It looks like Alicia is the only one with us this evening. It doesn't look like, I don't see Brand on. Mr. Rosa, I did actually do, just so everyone knows, I did invite all three candidates that we had to participate in the walk through project. Alicia and Brand had reached back out and just weren't, weren't available. It was kind of a funny, we threw it at a funny time of the day, so. And I haven't, did not hear from Mr. Rosa at all on that. With that being said.
I would, I would like to nominate or bring, send to your Board of Selectmen the names of Alicia Wilson and Brand Sidroni.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? That, that was going to be my recommendation also, those two members. Says any other? Here or none? I'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I will send an email to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to place it on their next agenda to accept recommendation for their acceptance. And then once that goes through, you'll be able to join us at our next official meeting. So thank you for coming tonight and welcome aboard. Next, we have review, discuss and act library building committees application for funding two oh seven Main Street Interior Renovation and Rehabilitation Project. I had sent everybody over all of the new community input that we had received. And then also we had the community input as part of the application itself. Anybody have anything they want to say before we? Before we would, before we just move on to? I just want to get everybody's feelings on what they feel about.
The walk through? I thought it was
The whole bit of application, the walkthrough.
Are we going to talk, are we going to have discussion about the CPC's decision? In other words, our decision of, of whether or not to fund this in terms of?
Well, I just wanted to see if anybody had any comments they wanted to make about the project in general before we entertain any motion.
Well, I'll say something, I think. I'm certainly in favor of the library. I've been a library fan all my life. I spent most of my time in library, libraries in college. And so the value of library is under my, in my case, none in question at all. I do find that, I do feel that the two hundred K for the HVAC system seems excessive to me, however. I think I can understand where they're coming from. They want, they want to have the most advanced, why not? Why shouldn't they have the best system that we, they can afford? It seems like a bit of a Rolls Royce version of an HVAC system. But, but that's my opinion, not knowing the exact numbers that these things cost. The other thing that bothers me is that they didn't have, for whatever reason, an estimate by a qualified installer. At least one estimate. Because it, the rest, because it now seems a bit of a hand waving business of they looked at some similar property from what I understand. And they came up, came up with that number. The other thing is that I think some people think that that two hundred K grant for HVAC is a non deal, or they think it is because they were friendly, they had friendly response, say, by the people who give out the grant. To me, that's just not.
In other words, that would right, so we have an award letter, it's
Yeah, it's sort of like, I guess it's okay. Generally, I don't know, but the CPC has, have they ever dealt with an entity coming for funds that didn't have an estimate, a legitimate estimate? This is, this is not, we'd have not received a legitimate estimate.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let Holly speak on that real quick because, I mean, it's, it's part of as a, as a design, you know, and planning firm, they, and I think we talked about this briefly in the walkthrough. Is you had a qualified HVAC engineer given estimate. It would, it isn't necessarily a set in stone proposal, but it's an estimate for the HVAC systems proposed.
Yeah, that, that is correct. So we had and a qualified HVAC contractor and designer engineer give us an estimate for this size of space and, and, and what we were looking to do. This project is still only conceptual, so once we get into the design, we'll know better. So these are sort of conservative estimates. Once we get into the design, once it gets put out to bid, we'll know for sure exactly what it will cost and I would anticipate that if it costs lower, then we just don't spend that money on that line item. I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's what I would venture to guess is what would happen.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I'm perfectly comfortable giving a little background as, as it pertains to the HVAC. I don't have to really putting some thought into it and being in the HVAC business myself. I don't think that the two hundred thousand dollars is outside of the realm, given the systems that they're proposing. I do think that it's the worst case scenario figure. If we go with full ducted and including the ERV systems, it's probably going to be real close to that two hundred thousand dollar figure. I think if we get creative and use some of the floor mounted mini split units, that's going to drastically reduce the cost because you're not going to have the ductwork in, in a couple of spaces. But I can understand that, you know, that for one reason or another, they might want to use fully ducted or not.
Can I just continue briefly?
Yeah.
Okay. So the big problem that I have with this is when I went back to the history, which is outlined nicely of the projects and expenses and so forth. The residual, if we were to give three twenty three K in its entirety, we would be left with what? A little over a hundred K?
Around a hundred and forty four in undesigned needed.
So I think that I can't help but think this is a slippery slope for us because you know, we get a hundred K a year. That includes the eighty five K out of the tax base. And added to that, the, the matching funds that the state gives us roughly. So you know, you don't want to start spending here like a drunken sailor when you only have a hundred K a year coming in. Now, if you have three hundred and twenty, if three hundred and twenty three K gets financed here to the library, you're not going to recover that for at least three years. And that would mean that you wouldn't have any projects funded during those three years. So in other words, to get, get the extra money back, hundred K is, to me, is too, too low. Because we only fixed income, a hundred K.
Well, we're possibly around a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and thirty three ish thousand off of our surcharge. And then we got, so I mean, and that's the debt set numbers you can rely on. We'll call it one thirty to make it a round figure. And then whatever we get for matching funds, which is somewhat volatile. So you're never gonna, you're not gonna that's like saying we're going to wait for our Christmas.
In a worst, in a typical case situation, you would have, I don't know, maybe you'd have one or two projects the year following this coming for us. And that would be, say, we'll say twenty five K for one, maybe fifty K for another, which is, so seventy five K. I don't know, you're coming too close, I think, to the bottom edge on that.
You're discounting all the money that's sitting in the other three.
Yeah, there's the, the designated.
Designated for three different, which count to like a hundred and thirty eight thousand. Between historical, open space, recreation and housing.
I need to know the bottom line, regardless of classification. What, what?
But you're today. You're not counting it.
How much money, how much money do we, can we spend on this project, this library project? How much money is available to us? I don't, I don't know about moving stuff between, you know, money between class, classification. But
so you can't move money from fund to fund.
So what is the bottom line number here that we can spend today?
What is left? So we have, we have, we have two, two funding source options for this project. The undes, unreserved, undesignated fund with a total of four hundred and twenty two thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars. And the historic resources fund at thirty five thousand, eight hundred and seventy six. So four twenty two. For sixty. We have four, four hundred and fifty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars of funds that are eligible for this project.
Okay, so that's still comes down to about a hundred and some, K and some change, like a hundred and thirty or whatever it is.
Yep.
And so going forward into next year, that's not the kind of money I'd like to see in that account. That's too mu, that's too small. I mean, if you had a savings account in your own personal expenses, you wouldn't allow well, you, you'd match the, what your income stream is to the expected expenditures for the following year. And then you would decide how much if you could take anything out of that savings account at that point, if it was low. And I think we were to give the whole three twenty three K, I think that's not a good position to be in. To be honest, I, I think between New York's in the next three years, you're going to have some expenses of people, or you're going to have to turn them away because you don't have the money.
Well, I'll make the comment that that, that's our, that's our job as representatives of our commissions. But even during public input, I got a ton of public input saying, I'd like to see the CPC spend more on preserving open space. The, the job of the CPC is not to not go out and look for open space. That's the job of the Open Space Committee and the, and more, more so the Conservation Commission. And say, hey, we think this is a priority protected piece of land. We should explore purchasing this. I think the reality of that conversation is land is not cheap. If we're going to buy land, we're bonding.
We're getting
Whether, you know, that's, that's the conversation you get in.
I think the problem here is that the expectations of public and the government of what the CPC could fund is wrong. Because if you have only a hundred thousand coming in a year or a little over a hundred thousand.
Well, I'll add this tidbit just to, to make it relative. Now, last year, we spent two hundred and ten thousand on the playground out of undesigned, unreserved. I mean, so think of that's true. How these two projects serve the public.
In actual fact, you, I think you're right. And, and that project may have, I have, may have had misgivings about that if I wasn't fully aware of the amount of money that we had at that time. And I was either reading the numbers wrong on the sheet or whatever. But then when you go back and you look, well, wait a minute, it's only a hundred K a year coming in here. What are we spending two hundred, even two hundred thousand? Or certainly like half a million or something for land or something. No way. This, this organization is not capable of that kind of expenditure.
Not in the town of this size.
No, no, or what they, what could be done if, if people really want to fund large projects like that through the CPC, they should go back and change the bylaw to say three percent. And that would bring you three hundred thousand a year into the in, 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 in other words, we're not a substitute for tax increases, which or we're not a substitute for taking fairly large amounts of money out of free cash stabilization funds. That's a different story. This, this is not this is not like you can't just expect free money out of the CPC.
Well.
So, you know.
I just make one comment. I'm a little confused about kind of the math that you're throwing around, which is if you're estimating a hundred thousand, which is rough, about that we get each year. And between undesigned needed and the other three funds that we have, we're sitting on something like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is, and your number's five and a half years worth of revenues. And we're saying we can't sustain this. We're sitting on five and a half years worth of revenues and we don't want to spend money. That something's really wrong with that equation then. If, if that's what the math looks like.
So do you agree with, agree with my argue, argument or not?
Well, no, I, I think that one, the job of the CPC is to look at projects that they come forward for their value. And that value varies, you know, depending upon the project. Some are five thousand dollar projects, some are two hundred thousand dollar projects, three hundred thousand dollars varies. But to say that we're restricted to only paying out what we take in each year, but we're sitting on five years worth of income. I don't think that makes much sense.
Five years of income, is that what we're sitting on?
Or between all three buckets, undesigned needed, historical, open space and housing. Hundred and forty nine thousand dollars.
Well, five years in income would be half a million, a little more than half.
That's so great. Mr. Gale, but let me just.
So, so I'm, I'm thinking a couple of things in terms of feedback. First of all, I'm listening to the the dollars side of it and I'm, I'm thinking that potentially if there's another way to capture this, so we're not there yet. I think there's a couple of things that have to occur. One is potentially, we may need to vote to approve the application is submitted. And then secondary to that would be another motion with regard to what we're going to fund. So, and I see those as two separate items, first of all, because approving the application is saying we accept the application is submitted. Doesn't mean we're going to fund it or not. Next one is to vote to fund, and I think if we're looking to vote to fund, then we can look at other options within that part of the discussion this evening. So for example, that two hundred thousand dollar figure. And maybe we can partially fund this project right now for one twenty three. And that may be something to, to get into in a few minutes too. In terms of the overall project, my personal opinion is I, I'm, I, my, my family uses the library. I don't use the library very much personally, but that's only because of my visual situation. And it doesn't have the types of things I need at this point. If the library is built, it hopefully would have more resources for a person such as me or anyone who has disability. And I say that because when I look at other projects in the town that other people have suggested we try to fund, I don't think any of us would disagree that there are other projects in this town that need taken care of and need funding sources. I think part of the issue and the concern and the argument is whether the CPC is the right source for a lot of those projects that other people are talking about because frankly, they're not. That's not what our mandate allows us to do, whether we want to or disagree or agree. Our mandate on what we can fund is limited. The types of sources and projects we can do are limited. Libraries are expensive. I think we can all agree on libraries being an expensive proposition. Having said that, this library project compared to library projects that are being built in other communities around here, as most of us know, is significantly less. It's a much, much cheaper project to fund. And that includes the purchase of the building, which a lot of people have alluded to in other parts of the conversation. We're still coming in far below other towns in this area in terms of what we're trying to do. From my perspective, as a person with a disability and as the ADA Coordinator, looking at this project and what it takes to make this project fully accessible for anyone with a disability, from a child to a senior, regardless of the disability. There's not a huge undertaking to make this project accessible. It's partly there already. And then, and the retrofits that we have to do fall within the guidelines of the historical setting and the historical requirements for a building like this to be made fully accessible. So to me, it's a win win because it provides an environment for seniors, for children to come together, for group activities to get together, for community events to be held. We don't have a lot of that space right now. We all know we're juggling space to find everything we need in terms of spacing and what we can do. And this gives more space for that. It provides more resources, resources for that. Families and children take advantage of the space. And I'm going to say frankly, I think other arguments that have to do with what the library offers or doesn't offer in terms of materials and books and so forth. That's not something we can consider. That's not part of this project and what we can think of to look at for funding. Those are separate conversations for another day, but it's not anything that we can consider when we're looking at this project. So, Mr. Chairman, I would first of all, potentially make a motion that we approve the application that was submitted. And then from there, go on to the discussion about how we fund it.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second discussion. So real quickly, I think, I just want to clarify because if you're gonna I think if you're gonna accept the application for funding, you're gonna accept the application for funding in the amount that they are requesting, you're not, you can't.
I'm going to oversee every project. I mean, it's one thing to get the information, but.
I, I just want to, I just want to make, I just want to clarify. So if you're making a motion, if you've made a motion to accept the application for funding, the application for funding is a request for three hundred and twenty three thousand.
That's what he did.
So
I will make, I will make.
You don't, you don't necessarily need to amend it. I just want to clarify. I mean, we can speak in depth about the approach we want to take. Or if somebody wants to, you know.
The question is, that is the motion that I am making because then it opens it up for that part of the discussion.
I'm, I just want to add my two cents real quick, just from a construction perspective. Is there's been talks of parcel funding, funding in stages. I, I work specifically in the electrical and HVAC business. Picking the can down the road is not going to make this project any cheaper. I think the HVAC is probably the most important part of the project to fund and complete immediately. I've seen a thirty percent increase in equipment costs over the last eighteen months, and it doesn't seem to be going down. Same can be said for, you know, nonferrous materials. Kind of volatile. So I think the quicker that the town moves on that portion of the project, the better. Because if it's like, oh, we're, you know, we, for all intents and purposes, if we said, oh, you know, we don't we might get a grant, we don't want to fund the HVAC portion, we want to do one twenty three. And then the town can't move forward with that part of the project. And we wait a year, that two hundred thousand is probably going to become two hundred and fifty thousand. I think the same can be said for most building materials. Just at this time, so I'd hate to pump the brakes on the project, so to speak, and and drag it out because I think long term is just going to cost the town more money.
Well, the, the motion that I've made is going to stand.
And so, yes, we have, we have a motion and a second. So we're under, under.
So I think what we have to get at is well, it, I won't vote for the three twenty three K full, full tilt boogie. I just I couldn't live with myself. I, I mean, I haven't dealt with large scale projects for the, for the government. I mean, I can't, we couldn't submit to a sponsor something that would cost the sponsor to go way down on his Congress allocation and so forth, you know, you would bite us big time. So.
And you're talking about hypothetical projects though. Like I said before, our job as representatives is to bring forth projects that are in the pipeline or are a possibility so we can forecast.
Well, this is an hypothetical, this is not like.
No, this is not, but saving, holding money as No, this is not, but saving, holding money aside when we have the funding available. For future spending is hypothetical.
Missing my point here. It's it's simple financial one on one. You have money and you, everybody in this room knows what it's like to make sure that they've got enough money in their savings account to cover. Who knows what's going to happen, you know? Um, and you could be cut short handed really bad.
But this is not an emergency fund. So we should, we're never going to get caught red handed. We're just, we'll have to be a little bit cautious and pick and choose.
Next year, you'd only have about a hundred and something thousand to play with. And then you'd have to wait till the following year or whenever. For the next hundred K to be um brought in. And.
Something something to consider is when we fund this project like this, when something like this comes to us, if we approve this. This doesn't mean. And I mean this exactly kind of the way it's going to come out. This doesn't mean this project is done. This doesn't mean this project is going to happen. There's still town meeting. There is still other components of this project that have to come together in terms of dollars. Whether it's a two hundred thousand dollar grant, whether it's a twenty thousand dollar grant, whether it's money from cap from capital expense. There are other parts of this project that have to go through and have to be approved and has to go through town meeting. So this is only one component, and the reason I'm saying that is. When we look at projects that we have to fund, sometimes we have to look at where the dollars are going to potentially come from, knowing. That in the end, if the dollars don't come from all the sources that they're meant to come from. Or if they don't pass a town meeting or something, then the projects aren't going to happen and you go back to the drawing board. So I'm saying that because I don't want everybody to think. You know, if just because we vote for this, it's an automatic happening. There are so many aspects of this. And every single member of the community still has voices in this going forward. This is only one part of the puzzle.
Right, but that part of the.
We have, we have to have. Can't go any further.
You can't allow the government, one of the, one of the um, I think advantages of the CPC to. To funding strictly from, you know, town meetings. Is that it adds as as a second set. Of people looking at it. And it and the people in the town tend to trust. Hopefully, the CPC members. For ruling out something that's clearly not going to be advantaged to. Dayton's finances or the CPC's finances. So. Um, my and and based on the feedback that we've gotten from people. Um, it's like, what? Pretty overwhelmingly against.
I I would strongly disagree. Go back to you, go back to your project application. And a petition of about a hundred and twenty.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about this here, this this.
You're you're weighing in a very small portion.
It's a small sample set, I agree, but nevertheless.
Like.
Well. I get the feeling that people that this committee perhaps. Just wants to okay the thing and let the let the um. Let the population decide. I don't think that's that's what the CPC CPC is supposed to look out for its own finances.
I think the CPC needs to be of an attitude that when you have a project presented to you that can make a significant impact on how this community operates. And there's no other, and this is one of the sole funding sources that can make that happen. It's our duty as representatives of the community to make that.
Oh, I don't see how that can be a do our duty. That's not, the CPC has to look at, that means that. And every in my in my.
The CPC is not capital stabilization. The CPC is a committee. Designed to help improve the community, which in. Which projects might not otherwise be possible.
It's financially possible to.
Just like I'm saying, so could you imagine? Last year, North Clayton Playground, if I went to town meeting and said I want to raise and appropriate two hundred and ten. I would have got. Chased out the back door. But when you utilize CPC funds to make an impactful project for the community, that's what it's.
You're going to be the character of the town. The bottom part of part of the process here. Is when you look at the character of the town, you have to look at what it presents.
I've said all I'm going to say on this.
If you're looking at open space, what does that do for character of the town sometimes?
My suggestion is. Is what I think is reasonable, given our financial, not the town's financial condition, not the library's financial. Our CPC.
I just, I'm going to give you a quick, let me give him a quick rundown, because just so outside of the. Um. North Clayton Playground. The projects that we have funded in the past, when we're talking about, you know, having, you know, and so to speak nest egg. Vital Records, fifty thousand. Historical Survey, twenty five. Historical Survey, base, well, pages one and two, twenty five. Lincoln Village was another little bit larger one, hundred and thirty six. Brook Street, fifty thousand. Pleasant Street Boat Ramp, fifty thousand. Um, North Clayton Ball Field, sixty eight thousand. Elm Street, uh. Call it eighty five thousand. Winslow Davis, one twenty five. Somerset Tennis Court, fifty eight.
You don't have to.
I'm I'm just telling you.
But that's that's ten years.
That's ten years.
Ten years of a hundred thousand roughly a year. Now, I hate to say, I'd like to see what would be.
What I'm telling you is like, we don't get a lot of big ass projects. It's not, it's not typical.
We're not going to get any, if we approve this, you'll never, I don't think you'll ever get another one, at least not in four, five, six years.
To me, part of the character of the town is to is to look at what drives people. To want to live here, to want to be here, to want to stay here. And if you look at a character of a town, having something like a public library for.
No, you're you're saying, you're saying that we should.
You look at the character of a town. And you look at a public library as to what it draws to the town, what it does for its residents, old and young alike. What it does for community environment, for community sharing, for community activities. If you look at the character of a library for people who want to move to the town. Because it has a beautiful historical building in this case, which is a library. If you look at.
You're trying to sell a library.
No, I'm saying, when you look at the character of a community, you have to look at the whole big picture. You look at a. Police station that's modern and up to date, just as much as you look at, does the town have a library, a place I can take my children? For families coming, you look at all of those things, and if we don't. Again, I'm going to go back.
That's like preaching to the choir, you're preaching to the.
It's going to pass a town meeting.
Yeah.
But in terms of looking at potential, the potential possibility of what it does for the character of the town. Would it draws for for people coming here? Would it draws for businesses when they're looking at potentially being here? We're offering the opportunity for the town to at least take the next step. And have a say as a community on June sixth or whatever that date is. I think that's the date. In as a as a.
I just think this is, this this will be the enforcement if if it passes to. Never again. Uh. Grant anything beyond the hundred K that we get a year. Forget about two hundred K for any more playgrounds, no, certainly no three hundred K for this type of thing again. Uh, no two hundred K for the. Lincoln Village uh, electrical sub substation thing, that isn't going to happen again ever.
Not ever, because. Fund has its designated.
You're going to have lots of little projects for the next five or six or seven years.
That's all we've had for ten years, with the exception of two.
So you're saying that you're going to trade the possibility of.
I am not trading anything.
Okay, no, I get it. You feel that this project is important enough, and I'm not saying it isn't. To the town. That. Um. You would uh, forego any close scrutiny of financial responsibility. Or at least not be, accept the fact, and it would be a fact unless they were to go to a three percent CPC someday. That this kind of expenditure has. Brought us down, this two hundred here, two hundred here and three hundred here, have brought us down to a fairly low point. And and wait, well, let me finish, let me finish. And and the and that you would not be able to. Um. Probably fifty K, probably half of your hundred K coming in. To keep things safe would be the maximum amount per year on average that you'd ever be able to. Uh, do again. So you're going to trade away this big money that for for as long as I'll be on this committee. So just keep that in mind. If you're willing to accept that you will not be able to hold. Uh, you know, spend that kind, those three issues in particular.
Then I'm I'm going to add one little piece, and this is right from. The Community Preservation Coalition. First responsibility of the CPC is to study the needs, possibilities and resources of the community with regards to community preservation. The second responsibility is to accept project proposals from the community. Conduct a thorough review with the aim of selecting the most compelling projects for recommendation to the community's legislative body.
If they have.
I don't have, I don't have.
Money to do it.
Which we, which we currently do.
This is going to be, there is no other. You made a, you made a comment about, you made a comment about going to three percent. And I think what the public should understand about the three percent is that right now. This is based on one percent of the tax base in the community that funds CPC. If in order for it to go to three percent, that means that that's something that has to be approved again at town meeting, and that's not just one year. That's every year. So the other side to that is great. We can go to three percent and we can bring in. Another hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars a year to the CPC to add to our. Thought process for projects going forward, but then you're going to have. The Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Town Accountant coming back and say, okay. Now we have two hundred thousand dollars to work with less from this side. Because it's gone to CPC, which has a much more limited ability to use the types of funds. So who are we going to cut? What departments are we going to cut? Who's going to get laid off? So.
I get it.
Other different kinds of implications, and you can't just say, well.
It it doesn't take away from any other departments. It's it's a surcharge on top of the tax rate. So it wouldn't affect the operating budgets of the town at all. It would be a two percent increase on your taxes. That solely support CPC, so it wouldn't affect. Um, town budgets in any way, shape or form. Um, just to throw it out there, because you both talking about it. So I did also talk about it, the selectmen's meeting. Right now, I it costs the average Dayton tax buyer about forty dollars. Um, a year to for us to participate in in CPA. If we did go to three percent, you're talking, you know, or two percent. Uh, you know, eighty, one twenty, it's just. So just to give you some.
And I, so finally, finally, I'm I'm saying that I think. We should.
I just like want to know, what are we saving?
Well, we think more of, let's think about what we have to deal with today. And 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 so I'm thinking. To be prudent. I'm thinking anywhere from one fifty K to two hundred K, and the reason I think two hundred K may be appropriate. Is because that's what is going to cost the HVAC thing.
Well, excluding electrical.
Yeah, yeah.
So you got to add that in.
So and since the HVAC is at the beginning of their schedule. And they can't really do too much until. Right, isn't that true? I think you mentioned to me that, or they, everybody did.
Right.
That you 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 don't want to. Do the HVAC after a lot of carpentry and so forth.
Correct, they're going to build around the HVAC systems.
So. Why can't we just give two hundred K and that gets them off and running? With the HVAC thing and then let them, uh, and then we'd expect that two hundred K back.
If the grant.
If the grant gets uh, awarded. And um, and I don't know about that grant, but but most grants, at least the ones uh, historical commission. They don't pay out until you finish and paid for on your own, the project. Now, I don't know if this is the same. It doesn't really matter that much. You still either have the money or don't have the money. So. Um. Hundred fifty K would leave them short fifty and they'd have to scramble and find fifty K to, you know, to finish the HVAC thing. On their own. So I I think that that would be as much as I'd be willing. Uh. You know, to give on this project would be two hundred K. And other people have said to me that they don't even like that. There's a lot of people don't want. Any money being given to the library from the CPC. So. Um. I may be overstepping, you know, my popularity here, either way. But. I just don't believe in wholesale giving away of money. Uh, without. Some careful scrutiny of the balance going forward with this commission, this committee. And. I've been bouncing this around a long time in my head between, you know, the. Three twenty three and so forth. And it'd be in a perfect world and everybody could go like a great ending like uh. It's a, it's a wonderful life, for instance. And we're seeing that today, you know, with with banks having problems today. And runs on banks and things. And those things happen when banks free cash goes down too low. So. You know, it's not altogether their fault, but. Has a lot to do with. The the government's uh, increasing the. Interest rates, which puts a lot of pressure on banks. So. Anyway. Uh. This this kind of. You know, thing, I I think that's it. So I would be anything more than two hundred K. I'm holding it against, and that's it. So that's why I feel like.
First of all, that's not the motion on the floor. Just for your attention. That's from. Four hundred thousand dollars at other. Uh, the cultural committee, the stabilization fund, the library, they're giving them four hundred thousand dollars also. If there needs to be any more money for updates. They don't have to necessarily come back to the CPC. There are other people that are interested in this library. So to hold everything up for fifty thousand dollars. I wouldn't.
Well, we have to bounce it against our our situation here. I think people. Why do I get the feeling that? That people don't have on this commission so far. That I've spoken to. Don't seem to feel the same kind of dis- uh, not distressed, because it's not my money, but it is my tax money. And it's everybody's tax money here. So. I think.
You, I, it's not that I don't. Understand what you're saying and I don't necessarily totally even disagree with what you're saying. I just think, my own personal opinion is that. This type of project is exactly. What CPC is meant to look at and consider funding.
If if it's affordable.
And if it's affordable, I agree. I'm not disputing that part of it with you, but what I'm saying is, to me, this is the kind of project to look at, and frankly. I don't, when I try to, I don't know everything in town that people could come to us in the future and fund or ask for funding sources for something like this. But to me, this is a once in how many decades opportunity? To support the funding of a project that makes a difference for the whole community for decades to come.
But all.
I'd see.
Saying, they will, okay, so it 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 comes down to. Conservat conservatism in budgeting. Versus a tremendous merit of some project to the town. And I think that's a poor argument. It's this lose-lose argument, especially if we end up getting into pain later on. Uh, with with dwindling, uh, our dwindling balance. So that's why I think we should, I should, we should compromise. And the amount of is up, I don't believe in in doing this three twenty three all in one shot. Um, it it also, it seems like a rush job anyway. Why should the library be finished next year? You know. You know, you want, and besides, yes.
Yeah, we're we're getting kind of off the rails, yeah. All right, all right, so. So, yes, we have a motion and a second to approve the application for funding for the two oh seven Main Street project in the amount of three hundred and twenty three thousand. Um, no. We'll do it, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Fontaine.
Yes.
Mr. Gail.
Aye.
Mr. Higgins.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt.
No.
Kevin Smith.
Aye.
Vote passes. We do have a couple of different avenues that we can. Explore to. Come up with the with the three twenty three. Um, it doesn't all have to come from the undesigned and reserved. We also have the historical resources. Um, that we can tap into. For that, so let me just pull this back up. Um. What I like to do next is. So we have the four twenty two. Three ninety eight fifty one from undesigned and then thirty five. Eight seventy six eighty seven, historical. Um. So keep in mind with the historical, so every every year at town meeting, we're we're going to designate. The ten, the ten percent to each um. Category and then the five percent for administrative um, costs. So the historic resources is also with the turn of the fiscal year is going to get an additional um. Twelve thousand five hundred roughly, um. We'll know in our next meeting what that exactly will be. Um. So I'm 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 open to suggestions. Um, I think personally, what I would like to see is. Thirty thousand. come out of historical. And then two hun- two to the two
Right, two ninety-three?
Yes. Two hundred ninety-three come out of the un- undesigned and unreserved. So that will leave us with a balance of five thou- uh, five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six in historical. And a balance of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand three ninety-eight fifty-one in undesigned. So I would entertain a motion to fund the two oh seven Main Street project utilizing thirty thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Fund and two hundred and ninety-three thousand from the undesigned reserve.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? No. Karen Nun, take another roll call vote. Mr. Fontaine.
Aye.
Mr. Gale.
Aye.
Mr. Higgins.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt.
No.
And Kevin Smith is an aye, so it passes again. Thank you. Just wanna segue for one second, so just back to something, cause Mr. Sidroni joined us a few minutes late. So uh, we 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 voted just just a little bit prior to you arriving um, to accept um your application and Alicia's application to join us um, on the committee. Um, I'll be, I'll be submitting an email to the board of selectmen, so you'll be placed on their next agenda um to be uh, appointed by them for for the position and you should be able to join us for our next meeting in April. So thanks for coming tonight and welcome aboard. Any other old business? So on the new business, closing out um, completed and or canceled CPC project accounts. Um, correspondence from Stuart Saginaw regarding the procedure for closing out accounts and reporting duties. I I sent out an email to Stuart just to check in, um, mostly questioning the uh, Pleasant Street Boat Ramp Project um, and the funding that's kind of sitting out there. In the wind with the project that nobody's really on top of. Let me just pull up his.
And how much was that funding again?
One sec. So that was fifty thousand total. And that was so thirty-five thousand came from the uh, undesigned. And then fifteen thousand came from the Open Space Fund. Of that fifty thousand, at one point, one thousand eight hundred dollars was expended towards the project. So what was told to me by by Stuart was that what we would do is just follow um, the town's procedure for what would be typical with project completion. Um, I think so if we if it if it was a capital project, um, once it was completed and closed out, those funds would just automatically get reconciled at the end of the fiscal year by their accountant back into um, back into the fund that it came from or the general fund or capital stabilization. Um, wherever that money originally came from. Um, so we have the opportunity to do the same here. I think what what needs to happen in this situation with us is it doesn't need to go to town meeting vote. We just need to deem it canceled. Um, have and have the uh, and then we can have the accountant return the funds to the two. Because we don't have a policy or a bylaw under the CPC that it uh, that a canceled project or or even like I'll use uh, the playground, that the remaining, we would, we don't have to vote at town meeting to return those funds. It's a, it's a completed project. So those funds would automatically just close out at in the accountant department and get returned to the fund they came from.
I guess I would just be a little, I I that sounds like it's much easier, which is great. I would just be a little bit concerned about exactly what kind of press count we're setting for future CPCs to should they disagree with the decision of an earlier CPC or an earlier town vote? Cancel the project arbitrarily. Not that such a thing would happen, but what are the, uh, what's the structure that puts it in place to say this is truly a uh, completed with remaining funds to be returned or this is a uh, one that has never really gotten traction and enough time has passed to say it is being canceled, yeah, because of that.
I think there's certainly, I think there's not so much discussion to be had with completed. It's right. If it's completed, it's completed. The funds just go back. But canceled is a whole nother. So right now with this Pleasant Street Boat Ramp Project, there's nobody representing.
What about projects that haven't you know, completed for a long time and yet were awarded money by this.
So, well, again, that's why we kind of moved towards earlier um, in the year, or or be late last fall, I should say, to the uh, project update report. So that way, you know, Mr. Fontaine has been giving us updates on where they're at with the the housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, but they're in the process and I've checked in regularly with the town clerk um, on the vital records.
You know, uh, I would say, and it amount of you have, you know, we 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 don't have something that says you have X number of years or something.
Correct.
And that if you go over that, you know, there's some procedure and then you get, then the money gets pulled back.
Right, we we there really should be an amendment to the CPC bylaw on how to handle this situation. You know, some sort of language with um, you know, within a reasonable time.
Cause like, for instance, the two hundred thousand.
We did actually put that in the new application process. I think that that again, though, that's the application process. That's not a bylaw. Um, I think it's just to, it was to make it known that you, you know, have a reasonable amount of time to complete a project um. And in this situation, I think this situation is unique because there's no one representing the project at all. I think it was a prior Parks and Rec project. And I I've I've said it on multiple occasions here and uh, with the board of selectmen that um Parks and Recreation currently has no intentions of pursuing land acquisition um, to expand the boat ramp. And it's you know, for all intensive purposes, it's fifty thousand dollars.
Forty-eight.
Well, forty, yeah, just to keep it rounded. So it's just kind of sitting in the wind. So it's third, you know, we'd have to do the to um, with the eighteen hundred, we'd to to fairly approach it, we'd have to do a percentage to.
On this same subject, the um before the meeting, uh, I think wa- last meeting, there was, I felt there was a need to know. And I don't know why anybody would disagree with me, exactly how much money we had to spend. And I found that no one really had a a really good handle on that. We had, you know, with where you had say, well, yeah, cause you have to put together the whole thing. It has to be projects that are outstanding, obviously, that that's reserved. Um, it is no simple bottom line.
And there is, so that's what I.
There wasn't, there is now.
There is now, yes.
But there wasn't back then.
So the one thing to keep in mind is any projects that have been voted on at town meeting and approved don't reflect in our balances at all. That's that's in a whole de- different light item of funded projects. So it doesn't, that never reflects on what these balances are. And that's why I cleaned it up like this, because when you're looking at that spreadsheet.
Well, that's not true, is it? Because when it's voted uh, by the town.
It's moved into a special account.
From.
From here. So say, so for instance, with this, if this passes town meeting, that that um, two hundred ninety-three thousand will be moved out of undesigned reserve into a special account, so no longer be reflected.
A new amount that is available for them.
Correct.
Somebody, right now, I I don't see anything in that. In that thing that Dave uh presents periodically. Uh, really, you kind of have, because there's certain, some, like you were just saying, there's somebody that's sit- sitting out there that doesn't, that could be brought in.
So the only thing in that ledger that was confusing was that um, the eighty-two thousand. The eighty-two thousand was actually was the remaining balance outside of the ten, 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 five formula. That was our estimated revenues, which even that, that was, that's just estimated revenues from last year. So that number is actually, this this fund balance actually, by the time we hit the end of the fiscal year, should be and will be higher than this.
And so, and so if you have that number and that could be periodically uh, updated, not, you know.
So it, well, it is, it is, we are updated by the accountant department monthly, but what I wanna, I wanna kind of get on the trend to simplify it is move it to this format and not, let's not go over this whole budget sheet with.
Right now, the town publishes um a free cash, there's two, I I think there's a um, stabilization, yeah, but there's also a free cash thing too someplace. And that way, uh, residents can find out how how well their town is doing. That that's really that's, that's, that's how healthy the town is, is how much money it's in its savings account.
Well, I would say that Administrator Mullen does an excellent job of putting together presentations, leading up to especially town meetings of showing us exactly what is available and exactly what is being used.
Well, people need to know before they come before this board how much money we have to spend, number one.
Well, that's why I kind of went on my my board of selectment tour um, to kind of get it out there a little bit more than just, you know, people that are following this project.
If you, if you wanna do a half a million dollar uh, land acquisition and you look and it only had, you only have a couple hundred thousand.
Right.
Don't bother.
Well, I mean, the same could be said for any project. And when you, when you're touching that amount, it, you know, a land, if at the end of the day, you know, a land acquisition in of that amount is probably in a town this size is probably a bonded.
That's not the.
So this is CPC anyway, so.
Just to move, to to move your thought a little bit, did you say that the fifty thousand dollars came from two different funds?
Yes, so the way that that project was voted on um, was thirty-five thousand from the undesigned and unreserved fund and fifteen thousand from the open space and rec fund.
Do we know which fund paid the eighteen hundred dollars?
It it all gets, it will get moved into one special account, so it's all paid together. So you need to take that.
Taking that under advisement.
Nine hundred out of each one.
I am gonna make a motion to cancel the project for the boat ramp and ask the town accountant to move the money from those two components of the project, the thirty-five thousand and the fifteen thousand less nine hundred dollars from each one of those accounts back to CPC.
Well, but it needs to be done on a percentage. It can't be done on nine, you can't split in half.
Well, then a percentage would be, if you did it that way, the percentage is gonna be seventy, thirty, because that's the thirty-five versus fifteen. So seventy percent of the fif- of the eighteen hundred back to the thirty-five thousand dollar account.
Let's do some math.
Thirty percent back to the other account.
Elizabeth, we appreciate, yeah.
Which keeps the math even. Oh, you have
uh, one second, I got, I'm working on it.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to cancel the boat ramp, boat Pleasant Street Boat Ramp Project and return thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to the undesigned and unreserved fund and fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars to the open space recreational recreation fund.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm actually still concerned about the precedent that we're setting. Like, I I am in favor of canceling the boat ramp project and in favor of returning the money. I'm not in favor of the board being able to, you know, as I say, let's cancel. Because many board down the road would take the same position about any project for good or ill reasons, if they just don't, they object to it, perhaps what something was done in in, you know, hindsight by a previous town meeting. So I just would, before we did that, I would like to have some structure in place that guides us down the road in terms of when we're allowed to cancel a project. I think this is probably a great project to cancel. I just wanna use that so that we can put structure in place so that we can do that.
I agree a hundred percent. I think, and we certainly, I think, make it an agenda item for our next meeting. Uh, um, so let's, cause we're we're leading up to town meeting anyway, let's create a bylaw revision to address exactly, exactly this this issue, cause next month we shouldn't have, we don't have any applications before, so we're just gonna kind of be doing some clerical stuff with um, warrant articles. So I think it'd be a good time to make, to have that discussion.
Would we have time between for at our next meeting?
So I think we're gonna have to, that's actually when we get a little bit later on the agenda, we're gonna have to have a making sure that we're be prior to the closing of warrant articles. So we might have to slightly adjust our schedule again, just to meet those deadlines. It's tough being in a committee that is a late ladder in the month committee when.
It could be legal, legal issues involved there. The canceling a project, maybe it's just the wording that sounds inflammatory or or overstepping our or any kind of thing. So you need to get Mike Mullen involved in that too, right? I mean, what's his take on something like that, you know?
I think you, with a real guideline you have to follow is what the CPA and they give us great latitude, apparently, from what you've read.
Yes.
Partly more latitude than we're comfortable with, actually, is my feeling. And so we just wanna formulate it in a way that we're comfortable with.
Yeah.
For ourselves and for future boards to operate within.
Uh, so is your attitude to, I mean, I'm perfectly okay to, we can withdraw this motion and then have the bylaw conversation and include this conversation at our next meeting as well. You'd rather put the language first.
Yeah, would be my preference.
Makes absolute sense.
Yep. I think the only thing to think about is if we do that, and I'm not opposed to that either, because I do think in the end, we should have either a town administrator or legal opinion just to to govern what we're gonna do. But just keep in mind that if we're gonna do that and then uh, bring it to town meeting, that we're not gonna be voting on this, which is fine for me until at least July, at the earliest. And that doesn't mean the project, I mean, the project could be resurrected in the meantime, too. And that's okay with me, too. I just want everybody to be aware of the timeframe that we're looking at. But I think it doesn't hurt to have a TA opinion or
Yeah.
a legal opinion.
I mean, at the end of the, we're not talking about, you know, a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars sitting out there. I think it'd be nice to get it back into the account, but we don't need to necessarily rush to. I would, I would agree a hundred percent. Let's take the right steps and and address a bylaw.
But that's what Stuart said.
Yeah.
He said you can't let it stretch out too long because of, but no one ever came up with a timeframe. I mean, the state doesn't.
No. No, I mean, it's kind of our duty to um.
It's starting to run into problems now.
And there's different parts to the timeframe. One is the timeframe, if it's actually a a project that's being worked on, like, you know, the Housing Authority.
Right, it's totally different. You have a representative giving you updates.
And that has to be clarified in the timelines as well. So there's a fair point to, to what you're asking.
Very good. Any other new business? So meeting minutes, uh, meeting minutes. So uh, thank you, Elizabeth, for getting us over. Um, so we have the meeting minutes from Elizabeth from uh, February sixteenth um, regular meeting. I actually, I didn't get a chance to get them sent out to you, so I'll just attach them onto our next meeting. For our walkthrough, I did, I have the minutes for our uh, our walkthrough meeting on March first. So for now, um, then someone wants to make a motion to approve the minutes from two sixteen twenty-three.
Um, I actually, I just, first, I did notice a typo in there, which I pointed out. So I don't know, you wanna redo it and then we vote? Okay, yeah, there was just. Okay, yeah, there was just the acronym was not what is corrupted a bit.
Okay. All right, so we'll just, we'll table the approval of minutes until our next meeting. All right, so again, next meeting date. Mr. Hall, just refresh my memory. When does Warren close? It is, it's the other twelve, that's right, bud. Do we want to go back to a Thursday and try to do maybe Thursday, April sixth?
Yeah, that's what I would like. C O D, but I can move that. I got April, April twentieth, right? April twentieth?
So, yeah, it would have been April twentieth. Warren's close on the twelfth.
Oh, I see.
So we'll try to squeeze in before beforehand.
I think we can move C O D.
Well, we can move this to, so we can go back to five thirty also. And we kind of kept this a little bit earlier because we kind of, we've had, had a little bit more discussion. So if we go, what, April sixth at five thirty?
Are you staying here, no?
Uh, we'll probably be back at prime time at that point.
Okay.
So.
April sixth.
April sixth. So our next meeting will be April the sixth at five thirty. And like I said, most likely, it it's a little tricky this time of year with meeting space, so we're going to kind of take what we can get. Um, I'll put in for it now and try to get on the calendar before anybody else, so. Sorry, guys, made you wait a while.
Hi, I'm Pat Gales, and I am the chairperson of the Historical Commission, and I want to thank. You for your support and restoring and rebuilding historic building in our town. No matter what that building is, it's still a part of our history and it's very important that, um, we preserve it. It is now a town hall building, and that makes it even doubly important that we preserve it. So I thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Yeah, I just, just to kind of piggyback off of that, I, for me personally. Taking that approach, and that's really was one of the biggest factors in in my decision, was that it's a, it it holds a, a lot of historical value. And I think back to not that long ago, when we were trying to decide what we were going to do and sell or. Deal with the the James Briggs House, and there was a considerable amount of people in the town who were very upset. With ultimately what happened there. So I think, you know, there's two things in Dayton, we're rich with, you know, historical. Value and with open spaces, and those are two things that we certainly need to, to, uh, be proactive and preserving, because they're also two things that you cannot make more of. So.
Anyone else?
So Chairman Ronald Connor, co-chair of the Dyke Public Library Building Committee and Chair of the Board of Trustees of Public Library. Just echo, um, comments about appreciation for the thoughtful discussion that you had this evening for the proposal and, um. Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I think we don't have anybody else on Zoom, right? So with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourned at six seventeen. Thank you.